I'd like to call speeding to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Zarzaki, can you please call roll?
Mr. Roman?
Here.
Ms. Chick?
Here.
Zarzaki present, Mr. Kuzno?
Here.
Mr. Quinto?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Here.
Mr. Dwyer. Everybody present.
Thank you.
Make a motion, adopt the agenda as presented?
I support. Any questions on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Call the public. There is none. Therefore, there's no correspondence. Clarifications from commissioners. Any correspondence I missed? Ms. Byrd? Thank you. There's no public hearing tonight. Reports of the committees, board of trustees, Ms. Chick, please.
The board of trustees met April 10th. The board approved a proposal to convert our current mercury vapor streetlights with LED lighting. This will save on maintenance and lower our electric expenses. Two proposals were presented by Kiwanis to occupy 75 Barker as a storefront for their resale shop. One was to purchase it from the township for a small amount and upgrade the interior and exterior over the following two years. They expected to spend more than $50,000 to accomplish this. The second was to partner with the DDA and work together to upgrade and bring the building to code along, allowing Kiwanis to use the first floor and the DDA to market the second floor. Kiwanis will be looking to meet with the DDA to see if they can come up with a plan if possible. The building will have to be brought up to Michigan Building Code standards before it can even be occupied and will have to comply with the use. I also presented a resolution to preclude board members from joint meetings with our planner, zoning administrator, and manager, building department staff, and building and zoning applicants at the point the applicant brings a proposal to the township they want to move forward on. It is under review by the attorney and will come back to the board for additional discussion with comments, and that's all.
Thank you. ZBA report, Mr. Kuzno?
ZBA did not meet this month.
Thank you. From staff, Ms. Byrd?
We had nothing.
Nothing. Planning consultant, I'd like to welcome back Mr. Sloan tonight, filling in for Mr. Lippens. Mr. Sloan, planning consultant, report.
Thank you, nothing to add, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Mr. Aquinol?
Thank you. We had a cleanup a week and a half ago of the Bark Park, as well as the community garden. Went through and picked up at the Bark Park, all of the messes that were there, inside and outside the perimeter. Fixed some latches, did some light maintenance, and made sure the park was ready for the beginning of the spring. And then the community garden, that same day, we went into and removed a lot of overgrowth on the aisleways of the boxes and planned out our next line of attack, which is the pump well and/or a pump house. Our next meeting is tomorrow, on this, in this building, on this floor, at 7:00. All is welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Downtown planning group, Ms. Infante?
Has not convened since our last meeting.
Thank you. Move on to 10 unfinished business. A's update on sign ordinance text amendment. Mr. Sloan?
Thank you. Currently, I don't believe there's anything in the packet, so it's more of a verbal update. We've gotten some comments back from the township attorney about some of the proposals, and we have some correspondence back and forth from a legal standpoint in terms of how to phrase certain things and how to regulate certain things. So, we're having ongoing discussions with the township attorney, and while, once we're settled on the language, we'll be ready to come back to the planning commission.
Very good, thank you. Any questions on that? Seeing none, we'll go to item B, discussion on accessory setback clarifications. Mr. Sloan?
Thank you. In the packet is a memo dated April 16th, and essentially what the proposal is for is that the zoning ordinance has some conflicting regulations over accessory structures. On one hand, in the individual district regulations, especially for the SR1, SR2, and MR districts, those districts state that all buildings and structures and uses have to comply with the regulations of that district, period. But in a separate section of the zoning ordinance, there are regulations on accessory structures that have different setbacks and different regulations than the underlying zoning district. The intent, I think, is to have the accessory use and building requirements supersede, but that's not necessarily how we can always interpret it, because usually in a zoning ordinance, the more restrictive standard will apply when there's a conflict between two standards. So, in order to fulfill some of the intent of the ordinance, we've proposed two options. The first option is to revise Section 36-98d2b, which would pertain to the SR1, SR2, and MR district, to give a little bit of clarification and then state that it has to comply with the interior side yard and rear yard requirements of the district, but that the minimum interior side and rear yard would be five feet, and then there would be no changes to the underlying zoning districts themselves. Option two is a little bit more comprehensive, and what option two does is, in the accessory building and use standards, in Section 36-98d2b, it keeps the current regulations that are already there, so nothing would change. But what would be proposed to change is that in the SR1, SR2, and MR districts, there would be language added to the last paragraph of those districts, basically saying that the requirements of the district still apply, however, there is a cross-reference to the accessory use and building requirements of Section 36-98d2b. And so, anyone who's in any one of those three districts, they go at the end and they see that there are separate regulations for accessory structures, and then they go to that section. So, in looking at the format and how everything is structured here, option two, I think, covers the issue a little bit better in terms of the discrepancies, so that the standards, they're not meant to conflict, but then they would be working together by having that cross-reference. So, that picks it up from where it was left last time, and I'll be happy to have any comments or discussion about the regulations.
Thank you. I guess my big question was that, I assume that it was a more or less easier for the zoning administrator to apply what's in Section 36-98d2b, or all of them in D2. I could see where, if someone was researching the zoning district and it didn't list it in there, and you weren't intently familiar with this part of the schedule of district regulations, it could be overlooked or cause some confusion. But I'm assuming that's more or less what the issue was for the zoning administrator, but I think it's, my opinion is, option two seems to be a good one, because it'll reference the section that may have been overlooked and would give an easier reference for a person to do any kind of site plan review, to go check this out and make sure that it meets the requirements. The first version of the proposed change indicated, you know, to just go with the setbacks of the district, but my opinion was that that's a lot more restrictive than what we have in 36-98d2, and I don't think doing that would benefit us as far as having more appeals go to the zoning board of appeals, or having more non-conforming structures in the zonings that are there currently. So, I think I'm pretty comfortable with having the setbacks be as listed in what we have now in reference to each district and each section. So, to me, that seems like a more logical approach, and it wouldn't be more restrictive for homeowners or for builders in the same time. Mr. Aquinol?
I agree, I viewed it the same way, and I viewed option one would actually, thought it could cause additional issues for us here at the PC and extra hardships on township property owners, so I'm in full agreement with you with two. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chick?
I basically have the same comment. I think option two is a better way to go, because we don't want to create more nonconformities than we already have. We've been trying to reduce them by being a little more complimentary to our residents who want to do things and open it up a little bit more for them to be able to do those things, so I like option two. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have a comment? No? Mr. Sloan, I noticed that in this last revision, well, let me back up. The first revision that we received had a slightly different take on how the language was in D2, or, excuse me, 36-98d2, and it said, I believe it started off like A, B, and C being, saying not. If that wanted to continue, that would be fine by me. I don't know, there's not much difference in it, I mean, compared to how it is now, but I noticed that was Mr. Lippens' first version. So, if he wanted to continue that, I would say that would be fine. And I don't know if there's much a reason to do that, but if we decide to go with the option two, it's basically staying, you know, the same restrictions or the same setbacks in height and things are all still going to be there and won't be changed, but if Mr. Lippens felt the need to change that minor language, I wouldn't be opposed to that. So... So, I guess seeing no more further discussion, I'd like to make a motion that we select option two on the accessory setback clarifications, as proposed in McKenna's report dated April 16th.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Aquinol. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Zarzaki?
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Quinto?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer? Passes all through.
Thank you. We'll go to item C, further discussion on the temporary holiday sales. Mr. Sloan?
Thank you. This is an item that had been discussed before, and it includes some revisions that have been made, and also, there have been some samples reviewed from nearby ordinances as well. There is a proposed addition to the definitions for temporary holiday sales, and essentially, right now, the zoning ordinance has regulations for Christmas tree sales, and so the proposed regulations would encompass all holiday sales, like Halloween and Thanksgiving, Fourth of July. The only, the major one beyond Christmas is obviously Fourth of July, because of temporary fireworks sales, as well as Halloween, when you have pumpkin sales and things like that. So, many of the items here have been just text changes from Christmas trees to general temporary holiday sales. Another addition is that they would also be permitted in the Whitmore Lake districts, so in the three sub-districts there, they would all be permitted uses. And additionally, there is some other, there are some other requirements there in terms of submitting the sketch plan for review and an occupancy permit reviewed for the use, having the temporary use not exceed 30 calendar days, with an exception that some temporary holiday sales and Christmas tree sales may be permitted to last 45 calendar days. And then, many of the other regulations are kept in terms of storage and cleanup of the site. And then, finally, the current zoning regulations require that everything be removed from the property by December 28th. So, the proposed change is rather than prescribe a date, because holidays go throughout the year, it stated to have the cleanup three days following the holiday occurrence. And then, the date of the removal would be specified on the temporary certificate of occupancy. So, that concludes the summary of the proposed text amendment, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. I just wanted to make a point that, we discussed this, this is, I think, the third time, but that's all good. There was a lot of changes to the small section of the ordinance, but in reviewing my notes, I think we covered all the topics that were discussed, all the items that were discussed that are highlighted. I just wanted to point out that in, on the second page, on B3, the last sentence was added, and I think that's a good point to put in there, that the sales won't commence until the petitioner ultimately gets a final site approval, which is going to be done by the fire safety chief and the building inspector or their representatives, and that they not commence sales until they obtain their temporary certificate. So, I think that just reinforces what we were all talking about. But, Mr. Aquinol?
So, a question in perspective to that. Say if somebody is definitely organized and believes in pre-planning, so they go through the whole process, they get approved, they can specifically say, "Well, we don't, we're approved, we appreciate that, we don't want to start our date until X." Is that, that is proper reading it still this way, correct?
On the specific sentence I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be fine, as long as they receive their approvals.
You know, like, say if they submit everything a month early, they go through and get approved, you know, everything earlier.
Right.
But they say specifically, "Okay, I want my sales to be able to start on X," and then, you know, starting there to go through. So, you know, it may be sitting in limbo for two weeks, but again, that's the best way to do it, so that they're dealing with all issues.
Right.
And not waiting till the last minute.
That's the way I see it.
Okay.
And some of these scenarios may be where, you know, they're going to put up the tent within the last couple of days of being ready.
Yes.
That might be the time when the safety director comes, or the actual inspectors come, but it's plenty enough time for, to be issued temporary. Just the fact that they shouldn't start proceeding until they're properly approved, so I don't see, there's no intent, I don't think, to keep people from doing their pre-sale arrangements, so...
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Chick?
If I recall, didn't we say that when they come, when they make their application, that they would have, like, the event application, you have a start date and a finish date?
Yes.
Yeah, so we would, they would have a start date as well. Okay.
Mr. Dwyer? I'm sorry. My mind went blank right there.
I should show up more often.
No, no, that's not it. It's me.
I had a comment on the loading and parking areas confined within the boundaries, except where on-street parking is permitted. So, the facilities I envisage that being possible are schools and churches, which have permanent parking, perhaps somewhere downtown where there is public parking lots or marked on-street parking. Other than that, I can't come up with anywhere where such a sale may go on, which would not necessitate shoulder parking, both sides of the road for some distance from the entrance, like a garage sale. So, is it likely that there would be a need for such a sale beyond the church, a school or downtown? And if so, how would that language work?
As far as the parking?
Yeah.
So, your question is about the public parking, right? The parking on the street?
Right. I can't see any situation, other than those school-church downtown with public lots, that this would permit anyone to do a temporary holiday sale.
So, you're saying this is restrictive?
And that's fine, if that's the intent, but if we, I'm thinking of a garage sale. No one has ever been to a garage sale and parked in the driveway or on the grass. Everyone's on the shoulder for some distance beyond the driveway. So, beyond a school-church or downtown with public lots, there is nowhere that I think you can put a temporary sale without parking on the shoulder. And if that's fine, then that's fine, but this says that is not.
Right. I think it would be up to the, to the public safety official, too. I mean, Mr. Sloan, do you have a comment regarding that?
Yeah, I think for a lot of streets, if it's a shoulder parking, you know, something like that would be at the discretion of the public safety official, because it's only where it's permitted. I think overall, though, the intent here was probably to cover the Whitmore Lake districts, because those are now included as being permitted for the temporary sales. They still have to meet the requirement of being a nonprofit and things like that, but if it's close to downtown, we could use that on-street parking as parking for that temporary use. I think that was the overall intent.
Does that help clarify?
No, not really.
Okay. I guess I'm having trouble understanding your question, too, but if someone's approved to do a temporary sale, they're expected to be providing off-street parking, but if it's in a place where people can park in the street, I think that's section saying they So, I guess if your question is, can, like, if there was something happening in downtown, in the downtown area, and there was people pulling off and parking where they shouldn't, then more than likely, they're not going to get approved to do what they're doing through the site process.
Well, no, let me clarify. I guess my question then is, is shoulder parking permitted, given that the first, the first sentence says, "All loading and parking areas shall be confined within the boundaries of the site," which is great.
Right.
But is shoulder parking there before permitted?
If it's permitted on that street, it would be okay. It says except, right?
Okay.
Except where on-street parking is permitted. Am I correct, Mr. Sloan? Just wanted to verify.
Yeah, it would be, it would be, that except is the key word, and again, it would be mostly for the downtown where there's established parking, but I can see where we'll get into some of the gray area if it's not usually permitted on the shoulder, but it's allowed because, you know, it's a temporary use, a short period of time. It would be a case-by-case basis, and it would be, you know, wherever it is permitted by the powers that be, but the intent is where there's typically shoulder parking available. If someone's on a lot with no parking, for example, they would still be able to do it, because if there's available on-street parking, they could use that.
Okay. That clarifies it for me, I hope.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure whether shoulder parking was available on-street parking, I guess that's my question.
Right. Ms. Infante, nothing? You all set? Okay. Any further questions on the language?
I'd like to make a motion to pass the temporary holiday sales ordinance to the township board for approval.
I support that. Any questions or further comments on the motion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Zarzaki?
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Quinto?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
It passes all through.
Okay, thank you. New business we received in the packet, zoning administrator's quarterly report, January 1st to March 31st of 2018. Mr. Sloan, you want to touch upon that?
Yeah, the quarterly report? So, the first quarterly report of 2018 has been submitted by the zoning administrator, and I think that we've been going on maybe five or six quarters now, where there's been a quarterly report, and there's the typical rundown of some of the new applications for existing dwellings getting permits and some new dwellings, although I don't, I see additions, I don't know if there's any new dwellings this quarter. Some non-residential use letters for occupancy. In many cases, these types of uses, when they come up, they're approved, and just the ones of note are included in the letter. There was an application denied for a new dwelling. The plot plan had some inaccuracies, so the applicant has been instructed to correct that and resubmit it. And in a lot of cases, the zoning administrator likes to call out any notable items that have either been denied or sent back to the applicant, just because it kind of clarifies, you know, when something is denied, what some of the reasons are, and that we cite the requirements, and then we let the applicant know. In most cases, the item is corrected and the application goes forward, but it's still worth noting. There was one zoning board of appeals case to request a variance to build an accessory structure on a parcel with no principal dwelling on it, and that variance was approved. One of the items is, the zoning administrator is now holding office hours upon the authorization of the township board. The zoning administrator is now at Township Hall every Wednesday for four hours in the morning, and she works with the zoning coordinator, the township manager, and the code enforcement official to address and resolve issues regarding properties and inspections and owners. She can also meet by appointment as well, as always, but she's now holding regular office hours, where she can meet with homeowners face-to-face, she can help people out at the counter, and if there's any time-sensitive permitting issues or inspection issues, she's around for those as well. And there's just a last item here, under other items, that in the zoning administrator's review of applications for zoning compliance and administrative review, she interacts with the planner to make Paul aware of any discrepancies in the ordinance and items that need to be addressed. So, in many cases, where she sees a problem with the ordinance, that flow goes to the planner and ultimately to the planning commission, so that these items can be addressed. And in the packet is a summary memo of some of the zoning ordinance amendments that are ongoing or upcoming, so that list will continue to be built, and items will be removed as they get addressed. And so, that is the overall summary of the zoning administrator's report, and I can take any questions you have about it.
Thank you. Mr. Aquinol?
I would believe when the zoning coordinator, is that you, Mary? Perfect. So, can I ask Mary questions directly, sir?
Sure.
Okay. Has this helped you, being able to make sure that the residents are getting questions answered more efficiently and timely? And I got to imagine it's also helping you to stay on top of everything as well. So, I would share with you, if you feel that you need additional time, to bring that either to us, to request to the board, or if it goes directly to the board, you know, to maybe, again, it all depends on how we grow, right, as a township? And so, because your statement is here, we are consistently, we are increasingly getting interest from commercial businesses. So, if that regularly happens, you know, on a more consistent basis, you may feel, "I'm getting overwhelmed again, we need additional help," and so I'd hate for it to, us to spiral down again, when it's just a simple request, where you can make that to the board, to us, whoever the proper individual powers are, to say, "Can we increase this to eight hours a week?" Or whatever you have, right? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Chick?
Can I just speak, the board is aware, we've all known how hard Mary works downstairs and does an excellent job, in that she not only does the building department, but she's working with the assessing department as well, so she's doing double duty down there. And there, we are aware, the manager's aware, that she already needs some help down there, so they're looking to either, like, reassign duties, but I think it has to happen sooner rather than later. And I thank you, Mary, for all that you do, seriously. Yeah, we're pushing for you. But I have a question, because I was asked, and I guess I don't really know the answer. Mr. Sloan, can you tell me, at what point, especially in our downtown area, at what point, if a business wants... point if a business wants to come into our downtown area or a business wants to relocate from one building to another, at what point does that applicant have to have an engineer? What causes that or makes it?
Sometimes for reoccupancy, sometimes a reoccupancy won't warrant an engineer, but if there's an application that has to come to the planning commission or if they're, what they're doing in terms of the use or the occupancy or a building change goes over the threshold of a site plan review according to the ordinance, then they'll have to prepare professionally prepared site plan, in which case there, it'll need the professional seal of a surveyor or an engineer.
So it's basically if they're going to do any changes within the building? I mean, if there are minor changes, I mean, is it necessary or is, if it's a whole new renovation, I can understand that?
In many cases, minor changes can be made according to the ordinance without needing a site plan where, and I don't have that section in front of me, but there are a list of things that minor changes that can take place where somebody doesn't have to come with a site plan where they can just get a permit. In other cases, if their proposal exceeds what's allowed under administrative review, at that point, they would need a, a site plan. Now, it's not, doesn't mean that it can't be looked at by the planning commission to kind of look at that list to see if it's appropriate or if it should be changed in certain areas based on the use or different expansions and things like that, whether, you know, whether more should come to the planning commission or less should be coming to the planning commission.
Yeah, it, because the comments we're hearing is that because they have to hire an engineer, it's almost prohibitive for them to actually do anything. And we are trying to make things easier for the people coming into the township without, you know, compromising our ordinances, of course, as such as we decided we can accept sketches for some changes in the, within the business instead of a full-blown site plan. I'm just wondering where we can help people a little more. And we, it comes up consistently. We keep hearing it at board meetings too, mostly from the board members, that people are saying that, you know, it's so hard to do any things in Northfield Township. And sometimes I think that, you know, people keep repeating it, so it sounds like it is, maybe it isn't. We're getting better, but what can we, we have a list of things that we're working on to make things easier for people, but it's really hard when you don't have specifics.
Right. And I think most of the ones, in, at least in my experience, in Northfield Township, sometimes it comes from the activity requiring a site plan coming before the planning commission. What we can do is we can add to the list of ongoing items to have the planning commission take a look at that list and see what the threshold is and what the requirements are for review. Sometimes it helps just to periodically take a look at those types of requirements to see if they're appropriate or maybe they should be adjusted based on what someone's going to do and kind of think of it from the standpoint of an applicant of if someone's moving into a business doing minor renovations, if the ordinance says you need a site plan for that, you can talk about it and see if that's appropriate or not, or if there should be different thresholds put in there. We can certainly add that to the list to talk about.
And the other thing I was thinking of is in our ordinances, we, we have to list some businesses that are allowed or permitted in areas, but you can list twenty-five businesses. There can be like five thousand different types of businesses that can come into it or want to come into an area that maybe aren't exactly the way that they, we have it written that they should be. I would like to make sure that our zoning administrator and our building department that we're working with people instead of saying, nope, can't do that, let's talk about this, let's see what you can do to make this work so that it works for both of us. So, and I, I don't want, I think we need to be a little more, listen a little bit more and help people because sometimes when they come, they don't have the right questions because they don't know, you know, what to ask. And so if they're just asking a question and they're getting a no or you can't do that here, then they just go away. But I think we, we can work a little bit better with them. I, I don't know if we can expand our list of items or, or make our ordinances so that there's some leeway there for interpretation has a lot to do with it too.
A lot of it is interpretation and sometimes it's interpreting within the class of use. So if it's retail, there's interpretation there. If it's personal services or things of that nature, there's interpretation. The more different things come up, the more uses that you want to include in your ordinance in your table because retail, one item is, can be much different than retail of an item where you want more control over that type of business. So that's another one where it's good from time to time to look at the list of uses to see if the list is appropriate, if there should be uses added or other items added that allow for any kinds of interpretation. And sometimes that can take place in the definitions. You know, the list can only be so long, but sometimes in defining a retail use, sometimes you go to your definitions and you may have a large paragraph, but that can really help with interpreting that part of the ordinance.
Do you want to put two more things on the list of things?
Yeah, just as a comment to Ms. Chick's concerns, if, our list of major amendments that we're looking at includes a site plan review, which I think is, touches upon what your questions were and the general provisions. It's add land use tables, summarizing permitted and conditional uses by districts. It's on our major amendments to, to be tackled yet, but, you know, when, when it's going to happen, it's, we're still coordinating it with Mr. Lippens, but those two things are, are on our to-do list.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions on the zoning administrator report?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of April fourth with dispensment of reading.
I'll support that. Any questions, comments on the motion? I did find one thing on the page, on the second page of the, of the minutes. Let me find it. Yeah, at page two, the top paragraph on the left, as I recall the conversation, this says thirty, thirty days is sufficient period for most sales, but forty-five days may be needed for Christmas tree sales in some years. And I think from and to the end of that paragraph is not accurate as to our conversation. I don't think we're, we were talking about up to forty-five days for fireworks as, that's just my, through my, through my notes. So if we could get that corrected. Is there anyone that disagrees with that or has a different recollection? Because I, I think we talked about the forty-five days for Christmas and that's how it was reflected in the ordinance language that we just spoke about. Other than that, is there any other questions, comments on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Ayes have it? Final call to the public. Anyone wishing to address the planning commission? None? Thank you. Comments from commissioners? We'll start with Mr. Kuzno, please.
No count.
Thank you. Ms. Aquinol?
Thank you, Mr. Sloan, for being here today.
Thank you.
Ms. Chick?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Sloan. Good to see you again. That's all.
Ditto. Mr. Zarzaki?
I am not.
Thank you. Mr. Dwyer? Got you that time. Ms. Infante?
Just really appreciate your clarity, Mr. Sloan. Nice to have you back.
Thank you.
I'd like to announce the next regular meeting, May second, 2018. And is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
I'll support. Any questions on that? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Ayes have it? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That's the bourbon. That's a great week. Um, I'm going to speak. It's pretty lively. We're going to the live for the channel. This is Scott. Okay.